At this time, I would like to call on Mr. Jimmy Rogers V. Wood to lead us in our invocation.
Okay, let us pray. Lord, as we come before you this evening, we want to say thank you, Lord, for the things you've done for us. Lord, thank you for being with us through these times right now. That is an unknown area for so many of us. Fear, happiness, sadness, a questionable time. Lord, I pray that you be with us each and every day. Be with these community, be with this state, be with the US, be with the world, Lord, as we have such a difficult things going on right now that are so trying, testy. And Lord, but we know that you are there with us through it all. And Lord, whatever we do, we pray that your guidance is leading us and helping us to make the decisions. Lord, we pray for your loving arms to wrap around us, keep us safe, and be with those who have lost loved ones and through this terrible virus. Lord, we ask that you guide us in this school system as we have tough decisions and have questionable things going on within this world that we, we don't know, Lord, we, we don't have all the answers, and we know that you do. Let us, let us always turn to you and turn to our neighbors and let each other, each other know, Lord, that we are all in this together. Our staff, this board, this community, the children of this county, and the children that all over the states and all over the world. Lord, please help us to do the things that are best and to be able to prosper and grow. And Lord, we know that we will get through this and with your arms around us and helping us. We praise you, Lord, we thank you for all that you do for us and help us as we go throughout these times. All these things we ask in our precious name, amen.
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 Now, I'm gonna pledge the flag, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance
I pledge allegiance to the flag
of the United States
of America and to the Republic for which we stand one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, board members, that was a little bit trying, but anyway, uh, there's a time like, and it differs from different people. Anyway, um, at this time, I'll call the public hearing to order, and I would ask that we present our 2020, 2021, uh, local budgets. Is Ms. Moody gonna do that for us, Dr. Nolte, or are you?
I think we're going to, uh, I think Brooke's gonna do that for us, you wanna click on the... Yeah, let's click on the budget message right quick. Uh, members of the board, you have been through, uh, the individual line items in a previous work session, so none of the numbers should be moved to you. The first item in what we typically would call a budget notebook that we've shared with you in the past, uh, as well as provided to commissioners when we present the local budget to them. The first item is the budget message, that's a message from the superintendent. Uh, this has looked, uh, very much the same through the years. Um, could you scroll up just a little bit there, Brooke? Thank you. Pretty much, uh, the same through the years except, uh, for, uh, the focus of the budget. And certainly our focus, scroll it just a little up, uh, the, the other way. Yeah, very good. The, the focus of the particular budget for this year, you can see in the first paragraph, is to recruit and maintain and support employees through passionate and productive work, that's our mission. That's most difficult right now with the COVID-19 virus, but we're working very hard to do that and we hope to do that into the next budget. The second purpose is really to limit expansion items. As you well know, we have been very faithful with many employee groups, uh, putting steps back in place for workers and providing, uh, information for people, excuse me, uh, funds for people so we would not lose them to other people. And then the third purpose that we really need to keep in mind as we move into 2021 is that we may need to make budget adjustments, uh, for things that we do not know about today. So we have that in mind as we look into the budget. You'll scroll to the, uh, or click on the next item. Any questions about that, board members?
I have none.
You click on the next item. Thank you. Uh, we will do the same thing that we did before, we'll go through local current expense. Uh, Leanna Moody, our finance director and I will take turns, uh, as we did previously. I think we did swap a couple of sections. We hope that will make it move smoother. And then Dr. Putnam, uh, will take us through, uh, the capital budget, and Allison Francis will take us through school food service. So, Brooke, you're doing great there, that's good, stop right there. The first thing are just budget assumptions, you always have to think about, uh, things that, I'm getting a little feedback here. We always have to think about, uh, things that, uh, are outside of our control when we're building a new budget. We are making an assumption of 2% pay increase. We have no idea what that's going to be from the state, especially this year. But we're assuming that it could be in that neighborhood, it could be zero or higher. We know that retirement rate will move from, um, 19.7% cost per employee to 21.5. And we know that if we hire someone and start paying hospitalization costs for each full-time employee, that amount, uh, for the current year is 6,306. And we've been told by the state that that will be 6,647. Uh, so you, you can probably, um, I hope you can see those numbers. There we go, Brooke's made an adjustment there. And so Leanna and I are gonna take times going through those. Again, board members, you saw these in a work session. I'll take the first section of program code 001, that is classroom teachers. Uh, for us, that includes, uh, 29.5, uh, local teachers. It includes, uh, summer employment for, uh, head football coaches and band directors. It in, it is money that we use to pay five of our lead teachers. And then we have the related, um, stipends and, um, benefit costs for those individuals. Ms. Moody, I think it's gonna be 002.
Yeah, the next, um, section is our PRC program code 002, which is central office administration encompasses, um, 956,456 dollars and 58 cents. There we pay, um, our foundation director, 30% of our federal programs director, 50% of our ECD director, 30% of our IT director, our assistant, um, finance officer. We have property insurance, membership dues, board travel and liability and property insurance. All that encompasses that program code.
And I would mention for public consumption, those folks who are watching the, the live streaming, a number of part-time positions, uh, being funded out of local. We are required in many instances to show a local maintenance of effort when we're paying someone out of, uh, state or federal funds to show that we're doing a local part of that. And then in a district that's not, uh, really large like ours, sometimes, uh, people have duties, uh, that we can, uh, not pay out of, uh, state pay. It may not be aligned with their particular program. Uh, if you'll scroll to 003, Brooke, thank you. This area of non-instructional support, this is a, a pretty large area. Uh, it includes, uh, 29, uh, school-based clerical people. It includes, uh, uh, 1.5 clerical people in the, um, central office. It includes, uh, 40% of the CTE director's salary. It, uh, includes one bookkeeper in the information technology, uh, department. It includes 17 custodians, uh, in the district. Uh, 80% of the transportation director's salary. Uh, you know, uh, he also does driver's ed, which is a little different. Uh, it includes, uh, 23.6 skilled labor positions. Those are mainly folks in maintenance. Uh, also the maintenance director and clerical support in maintenance. Uh, three, uh, clerical support people in finance. 2.5, uh, clerical support in the food resources department. One specialist, uh, in the information technology program. Uh, four clerical people in the central office and one custodian that serves the central office. So, uh, that's a large, uh, a large area. And, uh, you can see that total there of, uh, 6, uh, 6.7 million. Also, can, it also includes all those, excuse me. Go ahead, Ms. Moody.
I'm sorry. Our next section is school building administration for a total of 527,409. That includes two and a half assistant principals. Um, three administrators. That would be our elementary, middle and high, middle high school supervisor and our federal programs director, along with the matching employee benefits for those positions. It includes, um, the principal staff development, copier cost fees for the school. We've got, um, our accreditation fees include in OO5 along with, um, office operations of a school allocation for supplies and materials.
Uh, going back to 003, I know Brooke, that includes another, uh, uh, large numbers that I did not mention, 1.1 million in electrical service, uh, for, uh, our schools and support buildings. Uh, natural gas, water, waste management, telephones, telecommunications, insurance. Uh, we'll obviously pub, uh, publish, uh, a copy of this, but, uh, OO3's a big area. We're ready for
OO7.
OO7, thank you, that's instructional support. That's a total of, uh, 298,386. That includes all of our social workers, uh, our library media, uh, the directors in there, uh, uh, and guidance board, as well as our nursing contract with, uh, public health, uh, with cost, uh, some out-of-county travel and supplies and materials in the instructional support area.
Next, we have, um, program code OO9, which is non-contributory employee benefits. Uh, that comes in, uh, right around 250,000. That's basically our longevity, bonus leave, annual leave, mentor pay, and the associated employer cost with that.
Okay. In program 014, career technical education, uh, what a lot of people in the community still think of as vocational education. We have some costs associated, um, with duty stipends, uh, benefit cost, uh, contract equipment cost and supplies and materials. That area totals 82,040.18. Uh, and then I'm going to take several areas in a row, and Leanna will do the same thing in just a few minutes. In, um, 015, that is, uh, the technology support. Um, that's the money that we added last year. That is recurring money to replace about 20% of our student, um, technology devices so that those are renewed at least every five years. That's $350,000. I want to thank you for that budget amendment, or change. Last year, we have some teacher assistance in 027. Um, that, that's, um, uh, three teacher assistants with a total of 44,259. That includes, um, uh, some salary cost and benefit cost. Uh, 032 is the exceptional children's program. Uh, the supplies and materials for that program. 130,0993, that's a significant percentage of our student body. I think, uh, uh, Brandy told me yesterday that that was about 13% of our student body. The next line, uh, O34 is academically drifted program. And of course, these students are served in a number of ways, uh, beyond these funds, with camps and advanced courses and such. But this has some tutorial money in it, some benefit cost, some travel for out-of-county and supplies and materials, that's, uh, $7,500. Uh, O36, uh, $800,000. That is the local funds, that amount is, uh, includes the local funds that we anticipate having to transfer to charter schools, brick and mortar and online. Uh, 054 is English language learner, uh, program support. We have a teacher, uh, in this area as well as benefit cost. 47,665, uh, and 73 cents. Uh, O56 is transportation of, uh, pupils. Uh, this is, uh, parts and repair and label, um, re- related to transportation and supplies and materials and some workshop, uh, workshop cost and travel. You know, in that area, we're working to upgrade the certifications and skill levels of some of those employees. O61, that's a code, uh, very commonly known by principals. Those are, uh, allocated to each school's, uh, supplies and materials. We have 163,179 for our 15 schools, 7,000 students. O69 is at-risk supplies and materials, uh, funds, um, for students in special programs. Uh, middle school remediation is 072. You'll know that, uh, I think, board, you'll remember we talked about at our previous, uh, work session that 050 federal money provides most for the remediation through Title I, remediation enhancement for elementary schools. And then we have some local funds in here for middle school and high school remediation. O72 is the middle school funding. Uh, program code 301 is, uh, junior ROTC programs. That includes 2.5 positions. We do receive some funding from our, um, corresponding, uh, military sponsors, but it does not cover all the cost. And so we have 2.5 positions in there as well as, uh, related benefit cost. Uh, 151,890.80.
Next, we have 706, which is ineligible local transportation expenses. These are expenses that are not eligible to be paid out of state 56 money. Um, state 56 is for yellow buses. Most of this would be for your wide activity buses and other fees that we couldn't pay out of state. Um, PRC 800 is safe schools. We pay for two gate guards out of that. And the contracted services is our drug screening and Alert Now, um, calling system. 802 is athletic coaching supplements. And they are associated employer cost with those. 803 is band and cultural arts supplements for those teachers and employees. 804 is our high school remediations. Um, like Dr. Nolte talked, um, on the previous slide about the middle school remediation. There's where our high, high school lines at. 805 is large band instruments, um, for AIG supplies and materials to include, um, a lot of ancillary programs, your elementary, middle school, high school, AIG programs, teacher of the year, chorus, science, and band and cultural art, arts. 806 is computer system support. Out of that PRC, we pay seven IT techs, um, a host of IT expenses. It also encompasses testing and media.
Okay, on the next page, uh, program code 807, that is for curriculum development. That's basically, um, funds associated with training that we do to keep our staff, um, highly qualified and on the cutting edge. We have some workshop expense, um, and, and for, for supplies and materials and some travel, 12,300. Pretty, actually a pretty small amount for a school district our size. In-school suspension is, uh, program code 809. That includes, um, uh, some teacher assistance salary to cover in-school suspension. Uh, uh, some substitute costs, um, tiny bit of overtime pay and, uh, retirement cost. Also included at the bottom, um, line under contracted services is the funds that we dedicate with local funding to pay for threat assessments that are required for students. So that is program code 8, 809. Program code 813 is the employee supplement. That is a number that Finance heard earlier, I remember pretty close to that. We pay that supplement for the most part in March. And that cuts across really all employee groups. That's 2.7 million, 2.7, um, nine zero. Um, uh, uh, a lot of money very well spent to keep people in Haywood County. And then program code 815 is community and public relations. Sorry about that, folks who are listening, my computer likes to run a safety check every 30 minutes or so and it beeps at me. Uh, under public relations, we have a very small amount of money. Uh, $7,500 for workshop travel, uh, advertising costs, printing and billing, and some dues and materials. A lot of that is like, uh, buying ads related to students and schools, um, and things like that, pretty small budget.
816 is our employee celebration and recognition line item. That comes in at 16,200. Um, 827 is for school resource officers. That's our contracted services for our SROs at, at our schools. That comes in at 190,700. And then 838 is our line item for our Pisgah High School baseball, um, field. And then we have $10,000 seating in contingency for unbudgeted funds. That brings our total expenditure budget to 17,85,847.80.
And then a little lower, uh, board and those folks who may be watching, uh, on the stream, may need to change the, uh, view here so we can all see that. We have the same number. Um, this is our anticipated, uh, appropriation and available funds. We do think that we'll use some fund balance to cover part of this and over a period of the next two or three years. Um, we'll level off, uh, with, um, income and what we're expending and those things will come together. We've been working on that a couple of years, but you can see the anticipated revenues match, um, the budget with 16,675,847 and 80 cents coming from the county appropriation. I would like to publicly thank our county commissioners for, um, approving a new three-year funding formula uh, with an increase of 2.75% per student. Um, the appropriation will not increase by 2.75% overall because we do have fewer students, um, each year. And that's, uh, a phenomena that we're experiencing in many of our rural counties. Funds and forfeitures, we expect to come in at 390,000 and ABC revenues at 20,000. So there's a match there between what we have in our budgeted lines and the expected revenue. Uh, in summary, we have, uh, all of this displayed in about three ways because people look at budget differently. Uh, this page is really purpose codes. What is the purpose, um, of all of those expenditures? And so the 5,000 purpose is instruction. So you can see of the, uh, 17,000, uh, little over, excuse me, little over 17 million dollars, uh, uh, 8.8 million is for instruction. That is the largest area and one would expect that, um, from local funds being spent in the school system. The 600 purpose code is for support services. All the things around, uh, providing financial services, technology support, all of our operational services, um, in, in relation to support services, alternative programs. Um, that comes in at 7,347,813.18. And then auxiliary services, uh, related to nutrition and, and community services, uh, just under $60,000 at 58,659. And then non-program charges, that's again where you see our, uh, expected payout, um, to charters plus our, you know, small $10,000 contingency. Uh, the next view is particular objects, uh, particular areas, uh, in the budget. You can see that, um, in the local budget, uh, 7,849 is for salaries. Benefits are, um, 2,876. Uh, purchase services, some of those are contracts, mainly for services. 3,700, supplies and materials, 2.2, 465, uh, 717. Capital outlay, we do have a tiny bit of capital outlay inside the current expense budget for a small amount at 86,825. And then again, the $800,000 transfer related to, uh, charter schools.
A final look at the proposed budget is at the PRC level, which is the program report code. This designates a plan of activities or funding designated to accomplish a predetermined objective. This dimension of program report codes allows the school system a framework of classifying expenditures by programs. So this is just a summary of what Dr. Nolte and I have put together in the program report codes. You can once again see the total budgeted items for each one of those programs.
Keep scrolling here. Oh, there are, uh, there are two additional pages in the notebook that we may have sent you, which is just a, a definition of, uh, purpose codes and instructional services. There are written definitions for each of these areas. And when we publish the budget, we can publish those definitions. Board, are there any questions about, uh, local current expense? I know you've seen it before. Any questions about it?
Yes, sir. I don't think there's any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, I'll call on Dr. Putnam, and he will review At this time, I'll call on Dr. Putnam and he will review the proposed capital budget for twenty twenty-one.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'll go through the proposed capital budget for twenty twenty-one. As Dr. Nolte indicated, we went through these with you in work session and we're reviewing those again now. Bethel Elementary, we propose to replace parking lot lights and completed change over to LED at a cost of fifteen thousand. Also at Bethel Elementary, we propose cafeteria, stairs, and library lights be replaced that are broken, twenty-two hundred dollars there. Bethel Metal and Waynesville Metal in the dining room area, the HVAC has come to end of life at a cost of seventy-five thousand dollars. Canton Metal Cafeteria Water Heater, five hundred gallon water heater failed, boiler inspection at a cost, will replace that at a cost of thirty thousand dollars. Jonathan Valley, the Cafeteria Water Heater there, also a five hundred gallon water heater. It failed boiler inspection, will have to replace it at thirty thousand dollars. We plan to have on hand extra bard units for various school replacements. We want to go ahead and purchase those so as they fail, we can replace them out and have a quick change over at a cost of thirty-two thousand dollars. Maintenance equipment, we're in need of an equipment trailer for the forklift and scissor lift, not a safe way to haul these pieces of equipment at a cost of eighteen thousand dollars. A pro press to be used by maintenance. Plumbers need it to help speed up repairs at a cost of fifty-two hundred dollars. Maintenance also needs a four-by-four work truck with work bed. Truck is nearing end of life at a cost of seventy-five thousand dollars. Also for maintenance, router table and cabinet, cabinet shop needs it to help speed up trim work at a cost of fourteen hundred dollars. Maintenance, lawnmower, utility. Lost my place here, sorry for that. I'm trying to look at two places. I'm sorry, jumped off the one that's being displayed here. Meadow Brook, repair the creek. Excavate and install covert at a cost of... Hold it still, Brooke, if you will please, ma'am. At a cost of five thousand dollars. Meadow Brook, also the chiller there is at the end of life, cost of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Pisgah High Softball Field Lights, install four poles, light banks, and service, one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Pisgah High Dining Room AC, HVAC is at end of life, forty thousand dollars. Pisgah High Gym Dryer, got to replace that. Tuscola also received one of those the year prior at a cost of five thousand dollars. Pisgah High Parking Lot Patching, temporary fix until money is available to repay, but the patching will cost five thousand dollars. Tuscola High Parking Lot Patching, temporary fix until money is available to repay, but a cost of seventy-five hundred dollars. Various schools have awnings and repairs that are needed at a cost of thirty-nine thousand four seventy-five. Various schools playground gravel, gravel for two playgrounds would be three thousand dollars. And I jumped down, I've already covered the extra bard units. Waynesville Metal, the D building roof, roof replacement, the balish roof is leaking, will have to replace that at a cost of fifty-four thousand, six twenty-five. Waynesville Metal C Building Chiller is at the end of life at a cost of seventy-five thousand dollars. Waynesville Metal A Building Gym Heat, we're going to replace an old fired boiler with natural gas, will pay for it up in two years at a cost of sixteen thousand dollars. Waynesville Metal A Building Water Heater, currently no hot water in A Building. The Academy failed inspection at a cost of twelve thousand dollars. And Waynesville Metal Parking Lot Patching, temporary fix until money is available to repay at a cost of twenty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars. The total proposed capital expenditures is nine hundred thousand for twenty twenty-one. Just a reminder, this is the same amount as we requested in two thousand nineteen and twenty, which was up from a hundred and fifty thousand from the prior year. There's a chart below that shows the reductions from two thousand nine, ten school year to two thousand fourteen, fifteen. You can see some drastic reductions in this budget. During this time period, many capital items were overlooked and critical replacement was suspended. This created a windfall of items that must be replaced near at the same time. These items are partially reflected in the chart above and include, but they're not limited to paving, HVAC, and awnings. In effort to correct these issues, we are again requesting nine hundred thousand dollars to dissolve capital that can no longer be repaired or is no longer fiscally responsible to maintain. Please note, this additional amount does not fully fund replacement cost, nor does it account for the multitude of projects that naturally occur in a normal operating year. It does account for incremental progress toward replacement of critical capital. And also, if you'll scroll up just a little bit there, Brooke, I've also included the lottery fund balance is sitting right now at one million, seven hundred thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars. So just wanted to make you aware of what's in that and also make you aware of looking at the bids that came in and the total, including base bid and alternates and fifteen percent contingency for our replacement of the turf. I think Building and Grounds is going to speak to this, the lottery funds that are available and make some recommendations in regards to that and turf replacement. Are there any questions further for me at this time?
Any questions for Mr. Dr. Putnam?
No, sir.
Ms. Francis, if you would review child nutrition.
Chairman Francis, members of the board, our child nutrition budget for the twenty twenty-one school year is four million, one hundred eighty-nine thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars. This is a decrease of seven thousand, five hundred and one dollars compared to this current school year. Labor and benefits is fifty-eight percent. Food and supplies is thirty-eight percent and overhead costs are four percent. We have no plans to increase meal prices and plan to balance the budget without using any fund balance. We currently have four schools participating in the community eligibility provision and we hope to continue with those. And if we can add any more schools, we hope to be able to do that when we pull the information later on this year. I went over the line by line at our budget review meeting and if there are any questions, I would be happy to entertain them now.
Does anyone have any questions for Mrs. Francis?
I don't have a question for her, but I do want to tell her that I have had people that have commented on the fact that y'all are providing the food for the children. And they were a little surprised, but they were really grateful for it. So we want to thank y'all for doing that.
Thank you. My staff has been working extremely hard and we've had a great team effort from the other staff in the school to help us get this done. We produced forty-nine thousand meals this week alone and we'll continue to do that as long as we need to. Thank you very much.
Thank you for all you're doing to help out during this time.
Thank you.
That's a lot of meals.
That is a lot of meals.
Okay, is there any other part of the budget that needs to be presented at this time?
No, sir.
Okay. Ms. King, did anyone send in public comments that we need to address at this time?
She's not near a microphone, but no, sir, they did not. We advertised that and did not receive any.
Okay. All right, then at this time, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion of our meeting and we're just in time to call the regular meeting to order. So we'll call the regular electronic, I don't know what you call it, regular or not, but regular electronic board meeting to order. The next, I hope, regular electronic board meeting will be held Monday, May the eleventh of twenty twenty. I mean, at seven PM at the Education Center. And the graduation dates at this time still read as Haywood Early College is May the fourteenth, six thirty PM at HCC Auditorium. Tuscola High Schools, June the fifth at seven PM at the Ramsey Center. Pisgah High School, June the sixth at ten AM at the Ramsey Center at Western County University. And Central Haywood High School, Monday, June the eighth, six PM at HCC Auditorium. Board members, at this time, I'd also like to announce to the public that we do have a vacancy. We will be appointing a board of trustee member from the school system to represent us on the Haywood County Community College Board of Trustees. Ms. Sarliss, who served us for her last term this past year, will be going off the board effective June thirtieth. So we have announced that resumes could be hand-delivered or mailed to the attention of myself and the Board of Education to twelve-thirty North Main Street, Waynesville, North Carolina, two eight seven eight six. The application deadline is four o'clock on Tuesday, May the fifth. I would also like to announce that we are glad that, blessed to know that Zeb and Ashley and Stone, Smathers, Mr. Smathers, I know you're on the call here with us, let them know that we're glad that they're home and recuperating and doing well. And we appreciate the fact that they were able to come back home and back to Haywood County. So please let them know.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much.
Any other announcements, any other board members? Okay. At this time, are there any agenda adjustments or additions that we need to address? Is there anything from Building and Grounds that needs to be added?
There is, that's our Dr. Rogers.
Yes, I finally found the mute button.
I know, I had a problem with that.
I got in the panic there for a second.
That's all, we was going to wait on you.
Mr. Chairman, I do have three things to add.
Okay. Let's add them right after the regular monthly financial reports between twenty-one, item twenty-one and twenty-two without objection.
Thank you.
All right, anything else that needs to be added from the finance committee or anywhere?
Yes, Chuck, I have one item I have to add to the finance committee.
Okay. We'll add it in your normal time, Mr. Paul.
Okay, thank you.
Without objection, okay. Anything else? Okay. At this time, we'll entertain a motion. We approve the agenda as amended.
So moved, Chairman.
Mr. Rogers has made the motion. I hear a second. Second from Ms. Barrett, I believe. Are there any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote all those in papers. Say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I don't assume that anybody's going to be able to speak on the open session. We haven't had any emails, I don't assume. Have we missed Dr. Nolte?
No, Mr. Francis, we advertised that on the agenda and did not receive any comments for this particular meeting.
Okay. We'll move on to the next agenda item. You, board members, you've had an opportunity to look at and read the March ninth regular session minutes and the March twenty-fifth emergency electronics session minutes. What would you like to do about that?
Make a motion to approve.
All right, Mr. Henson's made a motion. I hear a second.
Second.
I don't know who seconded that.
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Francis, I believe it is. Mr. Francis has made a second to the motion. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote all those in papers. Say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have Dr. Nolte and Ms. Barker with the update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We just wanted to give a little bit of an academic update. We have, in the last little over two weeks, sent numerous press releases out, emailed everyone with a Haywood County Schools email several times. On the academic side, we feel very, very blessed to have gotten a very good response after the governor, two weeks ago on a Saturday, announced that school would be closed for two weeks. We were able to work that weekend and by late on Tuesday in most places and in every place, Wednesday about midday, we were ready to be up and running academically with services for our students, either in packets for very young children or in, through remote technology for all the students who could access that. We started out the first two weeks with technology remote. Mrs. Barker might expand on the number of Google classroom events that have taken place, but we feel really, really good about that. We know that there will be a very small number of students who just can't access that, so we're not pretending that that's not a real issue. I've talked to a number of superintendents across the state as well as listened to the media, and there are actually some school systems that have not provided any education in a formal way at this point, over two weeks into the closure. So we jumped on it very, very quickly. All of our close neighbors in the West have done similar things and we feel very, very good about that. The focus that we have taken for our school system is really two prongs, two very serious prongs. There are many things that we have to do just to keep everything running, like the budget hearing tonight. But academically, we're focusing on key learning, what students need to learn. We are focusing on learning, not grades. Our teachers have been asked to keep records of what students are doing and have some grades, but not enter those into Power School. We continue to receive updates from the state about how the rest of the year will respond. And in all honesty, I'm not sure everyone knows what's going to happen. We will have another webinar with the state academic folks on Tuesday. And as we have done all along the way, we will share that information with our staff people on Wednesday after we have digested it. The other focus, which we've already talked about some, is not academic, but it's feeding people. We know in this crisis, which is really a threefold crisis with a virus, an economic impact, and really a social, emotional impact where people are very nervous and fearful and some of them are panicking. We're trying to work on all three of those through providing some education and by providing as much food as we can. I cannot overstate how great our people have been across the board. It's not been a perfect process, but our people have gone to work reinventing education in a very short period of time. Our school food service people, our transportation people, and other employees have willfully and freely joined in to help with education and distribution of food. And I want to thank all the people who've done that, some teacher assistants, clerical people, administrators, custodians, in addition to child nutrition. So I'm gonna let Ms. Barker talk a little bit more about the academic side. She knows a lot more about that than I do now, because that's what she's been focused on for a couple of years.
Thank you, Dr. Nolte, Chairman Francis, members of the board. Makes me think of the first paragraph in the Tale of Two Cities. It was the best of times, it was the worst of times. Probably is the worst of times and for many of our lives, and definitely not the best. But even throughout this difficult time, we are seeing some beautiful things. Heartfelt videos being sent to us by students on their front porch, telling their teachers how much they miss them, how they want to come back to school. Saw a teacher today, a high school teacher, who started one Google Meet with students, had those students break out into five or six smaller Google Meets, and then they come back for a discussion about the book they were reading prior to school closure. Just teachers calling students individually and taking hours and hours of extra time so that those kids can read to their teachers. One teacher texted a parent to find out what a good time would be, and the parent immediately responded ASAP. So I know our parents are out there and supporting us too, and we are grateful for them. Our math coach, Knox Harden, has met this week with our math subject groups and grade levels and ensuring those teachers have an opportunity to collaborate and discuss the power standards in math that are left for instruction this year to make sure our kids will get those big rocks, big pieces of instruction. So even within these very difficult times, we are seeing some beautiful things. I've seen principals enter virtual meetings with teachers and kids, and just so much good work going on in such a tough time. Just some updates, a lot of information updated since we met last time. I do want you to know that we have now distributed Chromebooks to all of our second graders. We inventoried, we didn't know exactly how many would be distributed initially through third through 12th grade, but we did have enough to distribute to our second grade students who wanted one. And last Friday, March 27th, we attended a very lengthy webinar regarding academic updates from the State Board and the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. Dr. Bill and I met, and also with CNI, and he issued a press release Monday, which outlined many of these big issues. I want to go through these with you briefly and then answer any questions you may have. Our principals, we have met with all principal groups this past week individually, and they have shared this information with their staff. The first big piece was the State Board gave really good guidance on what is remote learning. They define that, and they defined it as remote learning, as learning that takes place outside of the traditional school setting, using various medium formats, such as, but not limited to, video conference, telephone conference, print material, online material, or learning management systems. We feel very good that the pieces that we had in place matched the state's definition of remote learning. They did add a very critical part, and they actually call them critical factors for effective remote learning, that they expected to be met before any permanent assignment of grades were given. And there were five factors. One of those was that remote learning was accessible by all students for which the learning is intended and is responsive to diverse learning groups, to maintain consistent communication between staff and students, address the curricular and instructional needs associated with appropriate standards, include evidence of student learning, and consider the whole child as well as their home environment. And as Dr. Nolte spoke, our focus at this time, we do have teachers that are grading student work, but our focus at this time in keeping up with those grades, but our focus needs to be student growth and learning. And so when, within this guidance, the exact wording from the State Board says, "In the event public schools do not reopen for face-to-face learning after May 15th, additional guidance for final grading to ensure equitable treatment for all students will be provided by the State Board of Education." So we're still in a little limbo with that. But I do want to go ahead and tell you that student grades as of March 15th, whatever their grades were as of March 15th, will not be negatively impacted by COVID-19. So if grades may be improved, there will, we will get guidance at that later time. And that's why we've asked teachers to keep notes and the grades that they are giving and students that are able to complete assignments, to complete that documentation. We have not, you know, again, I think we talked about, we have an academic policy webinar on Tuesday. We may get more guidance then, but no state guidance has been provided beyond Friday, for Friday, May 15th, right now. Elementary schools were directed by the State Board and DPI to focus on supporting student progress and communicating feedback to students and their families rather than assigning grades. For students in grade 6 to 11, student, again, Dr. Bill talked about this, schools may assign grades for the purpose of evaluating student progress. These grades may not negatively impact grades established as of March 13th, 2020. All high school students in 1920 will receive grades that they received in their fall courses. Fall grades will be included for high school kids in their grade point average. Seniors, the guidance on seniors was very clear, and I know our schools have communicated this with our high schools. Our seniors will, are required to meet minimum state requirements of 22 credit evaluation. This includes 16 core credits and six state-required electives. Local electives will not be required for the 1920 graduates. And their impetus was on making sure the seniors that were eligible to graduate, they wanted everyone to graduate on time. Their grades will be based on the grade that they had on March 13th in their spring courses. Seniors only will see, receive a grade of pass or pass withdrawal. So at this time, our high schools are working with our seniors, who may not have had a pass as of March 13th. They're remediating those students based on the material given to them prior to March 13th, and they will be able to issue an improved grade if possible. Do I, are there any questions? Those are the big pieces that you have for me, just in regards to those updates.
Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Barker?
Yeah, Jill, this is Jim Francis. My question is, we're still waiting on direction from DPI as far as your high school, your ninth, 10th, 11th graders for this semester's grades, correct? Whether, because my question is, are they, are they looking at doing a pass/fail for those kids? Or is there a possibility they would, they would actually get a grade for this semester?
I think it's fair game right now, Mr. Francis. I think we'll find out more hopefully on Tuesday. The debate about just giving a pass/fail would be critical to students earning quality points in advanced classes. So I think that would cause some inequities in GPA, and I think the State Board and DPI will have a lot to consider before they proceed with guidance. I just want our families and our students to know that whatever their grade was on March 13th, their grade cannot go lower than that, and I want them to keep working hard. So if we do go back to school in May, that they have a chance, they can improve that grade and earn the points for the classes they sign up for. I also want to encourage them, and we did get some direction today that, you know, in the fall, you know, we may have to assess and see where students are. So it's important to make sure our students continue their studies so they can avoid, you know, a remediation in the fall. They can be ready to go. And I will tell you, the majority of our kids are working really, really hard. And so we're still reaching out to them and engaging them, and I'm proud of that work. I'm sorry I can't answer it right now, but I think we will be able to in the days to come, Mr. Francis.
Thank you, man.
Jill, this is Ronnie Clark. I do have a question. I had a, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I had a parent ask me something in a rumor mail or something they saw that there was some talk about everybody but the seniors having to repeat this year. Is there any truth to that, or?
I saw that on Twitter, but underneath it said April's, April Fools yesterday, so. No, we have not heard that at all. I think it was like a vicious April Fools though. Because I have my daughter, she saw that, and yeah. No, we, we have not heard that at all, absolutely not.
Okay, just, that's all I need to clarify. Thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any more questions?
I have one more remark. Yeah, I just, you know, I want y'all to know that, and I don't want to list employee groups, but we are surrounded by heroes. Our school system, Dr. Bill used the word blessed, just with heroes. I mean, I talked about the opening paragraph in the Dickens book, that that paragraph we went in with, it was the spring of hope and it was the winter of despair. And I just want to thank everyone out there, all the heroes in our school system, who are giving our students and our communities hope. They're giving normalcy to our kids, and they are working so hard. And so every school employee, I just want you to know that you are such a huge asset to our kids and our community. And I just appreciate everything that everyone is doing, and the board too. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for what y'all do.
Absolutely.
Mr. Francis, if I may, I'd like to make one related comment to this situation in academic performance before you go to the next item, 15. One of the things that we're working really hard to do is to not restate rumor, not restate what people are thinking about in Raleigh. One of the board members, and I will not identify that board member, sent me a podcast earlier this week on leadership during crisis. And in all honesty, when I got it, great, this is something I really need to listen to, and, and everything's going sideways, but I did listen to it, and it was, it was really, really good. It was by a really capable person, and it talked about in crisis situations, thinking long-term, but only acting short-term. And so that's what really we have been trying to do. There are lots of rumors out there about what's going to happen after May 15th. There are lots of people making public suggestions to the governor, to the State Department of Public Instruction, to the State School Board. And what we don't want is for those rumors to become urban legend in our school system. So I just want everyone to know that we are almost daily in some kind of webinar with one of the departments, sometimes the federal government, around leave, sometimes the state officials around budgets and instruction. But what we will share with everyone, as we always do, is what we know to be the fact at that time. And there are just many instances where the decision has not been made about grades or the decision has not been made about school after a certain date. But I want everyone to know, we're going to tell them what we know, and we're going to do it in a broad fashion, and we're not going to make broad announcements that may not come true. So just bear with us. Trust that, you know, we're parents, and, and we have children too, and many of us have children in the school system. And we love our employees, and we're going to provide the best information that we can during this very serious time.
Thank you, Dr. Nolte. Can we move on in the agenda now with Ms. Barker?
Yes, Chairman Francis, members of the board, with the State Board meeting on Friday, North Carolina Department of Public Education and the board recommended waiving two policies due to our current public health crisis. Policy 3460 addresses our grad policy, and they have recommended waiving the CPR requirement for our seniors, just the class of 2020, for this year. Most of our students get this CPR instruction in eighth grade, but if they were to have missed that for some reason, we don't want that to be stopping them from graduating with the class of 2020. Do you want me to go out, Chairman Francis, through all these first, and then we'll vote on these?
I think we can just vote on them as a group. There's two of them, so let's just do them both.
It's really two policies, but several parts within. Again, in policy 3460, the State Board recommended suspension of board policies that required credits beyond the state's 22 credit minimum. You know that two of our high schools, Tuscaloosa and Pisgah, require 28 credits for graduation. Then we asked that that policy be amended for the class of 2020. They'll still have to have their required courses, but they will not have to have the 28 hours for graduation if they do not have those credits. Again, in 3460, our occupational course of study requires 225 paid work hours, and the Department of Public Instruction recommended this be changed to 157 paid work hours for the class of 2020. Policy 3410 details the requirements for end-of-course assessments, and they recommended suspension of this policy through June 30th, 2020, due to exams counting as 25% of a student's. Actually, the State Board policy is 20%. We count those as 25% of students' grade. We will not be able to do that this year, because we will not be administering end-of-course tests. Are there any questions about these temporary amendments to our policies for our seniors?
Ms. Barker, I have a question. I guess what we would need to do is actually take action.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the waiver of these policies due to the COVID-19.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Rogers. I hear a second. Who, who seconded it?
Bobby.
Okay, okay, Dr. Rogers seconded it. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote all those in papers. Say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Barker, for that, and what I was commenting is, I think we'll just have to reinstate them back in July or at the future date, when we get back to halfway normal.
Okay, yes, sir. Thank you so much.
All right. Next on our agenda, we have, is Mr. Haney in attendance?
Yes, sir. Chairman Francis, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, I can.
I made it. Chairman Francis and board members, I want to introduce a change in the HCLC's 2020 graduation date. We're moving that date from June 1st to June 2nd, that's a Tuesday, at 6:30 due to a conflict at HCC, and I'm asking you to approve that.
Okay, at this time, we entertain a motion. We approve the presented date change.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Mr. Henson's made the motion. Do you want to second it, Ms. Barrett?
Yeah, that'll be fine.
Okay. Mr. Henson's made the motion, saying with Ms. Barrett, to change the graduation date from Monday to Tuesday, June 2nd. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote all those in papers. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Haney. Next on our agenda is our attorney, Pat Smathers, has some information about a property bid.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. Board members, as you know, we declared surplus, some property, joining the Meadowbrook School. The, we have received a bid from David Payne in the amount of $7,000 for the, the piece of property. It's a small lot, about point, 0.94 acres. The tax appraisal is 6,500, so his bid is $500 above the tax value. If you are in agreement to accept the bid... in agreement to, uh, accept the bid, what I would need is a motion and to, uh, vote to accept it. And if that is, if it passes, then that event, I'll begin the, uh, upset bid process. We'll, we'll put the notice in the paper and follow that process. And then once the, uh, if there's no more up, if there are no upset bids, then we would accept and move forward with the transaction and close on the, uh, the bid.
Okay, thank you, uh, Mr. Smathers. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion.
Okay, Ms. Barrett's made the most. I hear a second.
I'll second it, Ronnie.
Second by Ronnie Clark, or Mr. Clark. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote all those in favor. Say aye.
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 Opposed?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. Uh, I will proceed.
All right, thank you, Mr. Smathers. All right, next on our agenda, we have, uh, Dr. Putnam back up again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Um, H E M C has requested a right-of-way easement. This is at the Francis Farm Property, also, uh, the old landfill. So, uh, what they are actually requesting, because they are putting, uh, the cover or cap over the landfill, uh, once they put that cover or cap, they're going to move those poles out of any old waste or debris that exists at that property. In doing so, it changes the trajectory of the lines, and the lines actually, uh, will suspend aerially over, um, our maintenance facility. And so H E M C is requesting a right-of-way to, to manage and maintain those aerial lines that will, uh, go across the property. And so I have asked that right-of-way easement on to, uh, Mr. Smathers. He has reviewed it. Um, and, uh, Mr. Smathers, do you have anything you'd like to add in the way of the right-of-way easement?
Not really. It was just, uh, as long as the board is familiar where the location is, and, uh, other than that, it is a standard, uh, utility easement, uh, giving them the right to enter the property and to make, make whatever changes they need. Uh, and, and so, but there was nothing out of the ordinary, uh, other than if y'all are familiar and consent to where the location of the easement is to be, I don't see a problem with it.
Okay. This time we entertain a motion. We approve the right-of-way easement.
Show of Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jimmy Rogers made the motion. I hear a second.
Second.
I have Ms. Barrett seconding. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote all those in favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Dr. Putnam.
Thank you.
Back to Dr. Naughtie.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, you have seen review of the local current budget, uh, including current expense, child nutrition and capital. This time we would request approval of that proposed budget.
Okay.
I make a motion that we approve it.
Okay, Ms. Barrett's made a motion to approve the local, uh, twenty-twenty-one budget as presented. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
And Mr. Henson has seconded. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote all those in favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, thank you, Dr. Naughtie. A lot of hard work on the budget. We appreciate that. It looks good. We just hope that we can come through this. Dr. Putnam's up next with some policies under item number twenty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I want to, uh, go through, I'm going to give you the, uh, short version of these policies. First, uh, uh, these policies are up for first reading, and I'm going to give you a summary of each as I move through. Um, eighteen hundred, the only real change there, um, is stewardship of resources reference. So it's reference update only. Fifty-two-twenty, reference update only. Fifty-seventy slash seventy-three-fifty, reference update only. Fifty-seventy-one slash seventy-three-fifty-one, reference update only. The ones with substantial change are forty-three thirty-three, um, and it addresses weapons of mass destruction, modifies A two regarding law threats to clarify the kinds of conduct of violence, modifies S three regarding terrorist threats, add several other forms of prohibited conduct, including threatening act of mass violence, making a false report of intending mass violence and planning mass destruction, and illegal references are updated. Fifty-two-ten, uh, significant changes there, adds info to the second paragraph to clarify that the policy does not supersede state law, the replacement of state signs in the right-of-way, uh, or the state highway system, or municipal street, right-of-way during the time period such signs are authorized by statute or ordinance. Adds a new section A to recognize statutory authorization of political signs on public right-of-ways. And section C, uh, is modified to clarify who the standard for approval of distribution and display of non-school materials apply. Three fifteen updates the web link, seventy-two forty, drug-free and alcohol-free workplace. Uh, it reorganizes, it modifies section A. It modifies the description of prohibited behaviors to be consistent with state law terminology, addresses C B D and H C, and adds impairment by mood altering substances to list, to the list of prohibited behaviors. And then finally, uh, actually, uh, seventy-four-ten, teacher contracts. A year is at least a hundred and twenty workdays performed as a teacher in full-time permanent position. Uh, if a teacher did not work a hundred and twenty workdays in a year, the year will not be deemed, uh, to constitute a year of employment unless otherwise required by law. Provides that a teacher's failure to reach a hundred and twenty workdays in a year because they were unapproved or legally entitled leave is not considered a break in continuity of employment. Uh, provides that a suspension is not considered approved or legally entitled leave, and modifies the length of contract options to require that a teacher have at least three consecutive years of employment with the board to be eligible for a multi-year contract. Seventy-four thirty, substitute teacher, legal references only, and policy eighty-three forty, legal references only, are all changed in those policies. So, Mr. Chairman, those are policies for first read.
Uh, Mr. Dr. Putnam, I believe these are second reading. We read them last month.
Um.
It should bear approval, yes.
You are correct. Thank you for correcting me on that. Yes.
That's all right. Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we approve these policies. Uh, I don't think we've had any input on them and, you know, pretty well standardized.
Okay. This time we have a motion from Mr. Rogers. Do I hear a second?
I'll second. Go ahead.
Because Mr. Francis, was that correct?
Right.
Okay. Uh, we have a second by Mr. Francis. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote all those in favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Dr. Putnam and, uh, Mr. Rogers for your work on the policy committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Putnam. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Next, we have our finance chair, Mr. Ronnie Clark. Yes, uh, Mr. Francis, I have, uh, I want to present the regular monthly finance reports through the, uh, board. The finance committee reviewed everything earlier, and it looks good, and I want to bring it up for a vote, please. Okay. We have a motion from Mr. Clark. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rogers, I believe. Uh, any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I believe that was Dr. Rogers, Mr. Chairman.
Was it Dr. Rogers?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let the minutes correct me on that. The second was by Dr. Rogers. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure that's right. Okay, carry on, Mr. Clark. Yes, uh, Mr. Francis, we have one more item. Um, the truck that we agreed to purchase, uh, on the last meeting, uh, we agreed for thirty-seven thousand, uh, dollars. It turns out that it was going to be thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-four and eleven cents, and we need, we're bringing it back to, uh, re, uh, vote for that extra eighteen hundred dollars. Okay. We have a motion from Mr. Clark to increase the, uh, cost of the truck that was previously approved. And do I hear a second at this time?
Second.
Second by Mr. Henson. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Anything else from finance?
No, sir, Mr. Francis. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clark. Thank you for the hard work of the finance committee and Ms. Moody and all concerned. Thank you much. Okay, next we have our building grounds chair had asked to add some items to the agenda, which we did earlier. And so at this time, I'll recognize Dr. Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have three motions to bring forward the board tonight. Uh, the first motion is a motion to approve, um, the Tuscola High School Haywood Regional Medical Center signage contract, uh, with the amending change, uh, limiting, um, it to sports medicine and athletic training services in agreement.
Okay. We have a motion from Dr. Rogers. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Ms. Barrett has seconded the motion. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, the, the second motion, uh, is a motion on behalf of Building and Grounds to sus- to suspend, uh, the replacement of the turf at both Tuscola and Pisgah due to economic health and the wellness impact of COVID nineteen. Uh, we'll suspend that for further, uh, consideration in December.
Okay. We have a motion from Dr. Rogers and the Building and Grounds Committee. Do I hear a second? Uh, Mr. Rogers has seconded. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? Does that mean that we will, um, revisit this in December, or will, will we start on it in December?
We'll revisit it in December, see what kind of financial impact there is, and, uh, see what kind of shape we're in once we come out of this, uh, crisis mode. And, um, then we can, uh, we can look at it in December and decide what we're going to, what we're going to do.
I've seen one comment on, or thing on the email that was sent out about it that said that we thought we could get by another year. We had to have somebody look at it, or is that already, it's going to cost eighteen hundred dollars to have them check it? Has that already been done, or?
Dr. Putnam, you correct me if I'm wrong, but when we tested, done the bounce test on it last year, uh, we, we met, uh, or we exceeded the, the standard and, um, could probably get another year out of it. Uh, I don't think we have to test it again, do we, Dr. Putnam?
Uh, we certainly do not have to. Uh, I know that Josh and I have spoken with the, uh, the rep for the company who installed it the last time. Uh, the threshold on that, it measures, uh, the impact of a specific ball that measures, measures that impact. And the high end of that threshold is one fifty-five, and we were well under that threshold at, uh, an average of one twenty-six between the two high school fields. So being under it by, um, twenty-nine points. So we're, we're well under the threshold. Uh, the rep felt like it would, it would move, you have, uh, but we certainly can authorize, if you, if y'all so choose, we can authorize them, uh, for, uh, additional testing. It'll cost eighteen hundred dollars to do so.
Is that, is that a safety issue, or is it just?
Uh, yes, the, the type of test being conduct, conducted is a G max test. It measures the, the play, plane surface for contact, how compacted, how hard is the surface. Um, and again, we, we met and fell under the threshold that we have to for it to be safe for play. Uh, and the rep felt like that it would be safe for play for one more year. However, if y'all wanted to, uh, have, uh, a stamp of approval, we certainly could, uh, elect, uh, to, to run the G max testing again.
Dr. Putnam, it, it would be my suggestion, since, um, athletics falls underneath your repertoire of, of things that you do for Haywood County Schools, uh, maybe we should get with the athletic director and head football coach at both high schools and, and, and see their comfort level with proceeding forward, uh, if, if they would prefer us to test it or not, and let them make the recommendation back to us. And, and should they need that, uh, we would, we would certainly consider doing, uh, what's necessary. Uh, I, I think we really want to know, my, my gut tells me we really want to know, uh, so that when we reach December, it'll help us make a decision.
Yes, sir. Uh, I will, uh, get with them as you, uh, requested and, uh, see if, see if they want to test. They want some comfort level list.
I mean, that's, that's just my recommendation that the rest of the board can, if they disagree with that, they can, let them say so.
I, I totally agree with that, Dr. Rogers, and, uh,
I agree as well.
Putnam, thank you very much. Yes, yes. At any times, I feel like we really, we really got to be frugal with what we have right now, just to make sure. I mean, even though we know and the, I hope the public realizes that, you know, this money that's set aside for these type of projects is construction only by the lottery. They're not allowed to be used for other things right at this time, but we don't know what the government might tell. We don't know the outcome of this crisis. So that's, uh, that is our biggest concerns and for our, we, we do want to, because definitely have concerns for the safety of, of our children and, and the athletics in these fields.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Anybody else? Okay, uh, at this time, um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimous.
Last motion, uh, Mr. Chairman, um, some time ago, we voted to surplus activity bus eighty-eight twelve. Um, it failed to meet scrap value, therefore did not sell. And , uh, emergency management has a need for that activity bus for training purposes. So Building and Grounds is making a motion that we give them that bus for training, and then when they're through with it, we'll be able to scrap that bus at scrap value.
Okay. We have a motion by Dr. Rogers. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Who was it that seconded?
Burnett. Mr. Burnett.
Okay, David Burnett. Mr. Burnett has seconded the motion. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much for the hard work of the Building and Grounds Committee. Is there anything else, Dr. Rogers?
No, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Next, we have, uh, Dr. Naughtie with our personnel.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, um, and, uh, people who are logged in to listen, uh, I want to present at this time, the personnel that we discussed in closed session. For your information, under separation
For your information, under separation from employment, we have 10 employee status change, one. Leave of absence, one. Personnel for approval, under employment, five. Under employment status change, seven. Under leave of absence, one. Under employee coach, one. Under non-employee coach, one. Under volunteer coaching services, four. Under administrative contracts, 12.
Okay, at this time, we entertain a motion that we approve the personnel as presented.
I make a motion that we approve.
Okay, Ms. Barrett, who was the second?
David Burnett.
David Burnett, Mr. Burnett, has seconded the motion. Are there any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Naughtie.
Thank you, board.
Is there anything else that needs to come before the board before we adjourn? Mr. Francis, somebody over check on Mr. Kirkpatrick. Is he all right? Never heard him be this quiet.
He is.
I'm here, I'm just soaking it all in. I believe that was a Hilton Welfare check, if you ask me. I appreciate the board members bearing with me tonight as we try to hear what is going on, as well as try to keep up with it. I appreciate your patience with me tonight, and I appreciate everybody being here tonight and the hard work of the administration and our folks that have made this possible through the IT, through the technology of the day. So if there being nothing else, I want to say, meeting adjourned.